Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our consent agenda for city council. And following that, we will have a lengthy workshop that should be able to get out of here by 5:00 tonight?
Oh, tonight?
I was thinking Thursday.
We will jump in there and call the meeting to order. Are there any changes on the minutes for the 19th of November? See none, I move that we approve the November 19th meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Any items on consent to be pulled for clarification or discussion? See none, I move that we approve consent agenda items 1 through 13.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have someone that wants to spend money. Board of bids. You're getting good at it.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Hannah Lane, Department of Finance, here to present the board of bids report from the November 25th board of bids date. First engineering bid we have is Aquatics Master Plan Phase 1A. We're going to defer to December 2nd board of bids. KDOT Mount Vernon Road at Broadway to Southeast Boulevard deferred to December 2nd. Wastewater Treatment Plan SES Gate Replace, Donlea and Sons Construction for groups 1 through 5 for an aggregate total of $295,000. 2020 WTP Valve Actuator, Donlea and Sons Construction for $997,572. Aquatics Master Plan Phase 1B deferred to December 2nd. Manhole Rehab Reconstruction 2020 Set 1 Utility Maintenance Contractors for $236,300. 2020 OP-3 CIP Street Repairs Phase 2 PPJ Construction for $380,000. Water Distribution System tied with Sanitary Sewer to serve Estancia Second Edition, NOAH Construction Groups 1 and Group 2 for an aggregate total of $134,482.25. Paradise Circle to serve Emerald Bay Edition, Pearson Construction for $194,410.15. Water Distribution System to serve Emerald Bay Fourth Edition, DLS Underground for $52,802.70. Meters Replacement Parts and Ertz, we're going to defer to the December 2nd. Solidification and Disposal of Waste, Ready Industries Incorporated for $30,405. Four-Wheeled Rubber Tire Loader Backhoe deferred to December 2nd. Replacement of Two Revolving Doors, Door Makeable USA, $73,349.55. $33,000 GVWR Cabin Chassis deferred to December 2nd. Taser Body-Worn Cameras and Tasers, Axon Enterprises, for $163,000. Our open request for proposals, we have install pour-in-place playground surfacing, data link analysis software, extended stay providers for RAD program, on-call consulting services, vehicle fleet information software, CDBG Youth Crime Prevention, Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grant. There's our e-procurement website and our purchasing office staff phone number. And with that, I approve the bid awards as recommendations, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions on those? Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. My question is around the Aquatics Master Plan. What are some of the struggles we're having on deferring that? And how is that impacting our timeline on getting that done for Phase 1?
We're analyzing the bids that were received. We did it in two different bid packages, met with staff on Monday, and we'll be coming back to you with a recommendation on the 3rd on how to proceed.
Okay. Is that going to extend the timeline a bit now since?
In all likelihood, it will, but we're still evaluating.
Okay. Thank you.
Not frustrating at all. Any other questions? I move that we award the bids as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Doesn't look like we have any council member business. Are there any appointments, comments? Yes.
Mayor, I have one appointment and one rescission. So I need to appoint Mika Piccola to replace Mike May on the transit board. Mr. May had to leave that position. And I need to rescind the appointment last week for June Johnson to dab six, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Blueba.
Okay.
And I would like to appoint June Johnson to District 4 advisory board.
Hey, now we know where she lives.
That's right. Thank you.
Someone had my information wrong.
It's those Roman numerals. Not you. It was a transposition.
All right. Any other appointments? I move that we approve the appointments as just mentioned.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Any comments today? All right. Quiet group. We will adjourn today's meeting. A move that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn today, and then we can go into workshop. That means we don't have any executive session, so I know that makes everyone happy. All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will adjourn today's council meeting and turn it over to City Manager to start on the workshop.
Thank you, Mayor. For the last 60 days, staff has been working with our federal and state lobbyists to prepare for you today, a draft, two draft agendas, one for our federal legislative priorities, and then the second one for our state legislative priorities. Dante Martin has coordinated that effort, and I'm going to turn it over to him. We do have our lobbyist available to you by Skype, and fingers crossed this all works.
There's Jim.
Thank you, Dante.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good morning, Mayor Longwell, members of the City Council, Assistant City Manager Dante Martin. As the manager mentioned, we've been working for the last several months with Jim Davenport of Thorn Run and also Kimberly Savadi of Brighton Carpenter. Jim's on the screen. He's going to provide us an overview of the draft federal legislative agenda, also highlight some key accomplishments over the last several years and key issues that we should anticipate in 2020. After Jim, we're going to Skype in Kimberly, and she'll go over the state legislative agenda.
Could we not get a better picture of Jim? Oh, that is Jim.
Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Sorry, folks. So we were testing the system before you all sat down. I hope you can hear me well. I do get a lot of echo in there with the multiple microphones, so if you're making fun of me, you can all laugh at my expense. That's okay. But happy to see everyone this morning. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you hear about the 18s?
Go ahead.
We can hear you fine on our end, Jim.
Okay, great. I'm going to walk through the agenda. First of all, I just wanted to say good morning to everyone there. I'll give you a brief lay of the land if you would like, what we expect to see between now and the holidays. Here in Washington, as you've possibly seen in the last week or so, there's been a lot of activity here that's not related to legislation but more related to the President's activities. That's sort of been the main focus here in Washington for the last two weeks. Having said that, Congress needs to finalize the appropriations bills for FY '20. They have not succeeded in getting any bills across the finish line at this point. Right now, we are operating a continuing resolution with FY '19 spending. That continuing resolution has been extended to December 20th. Congress is planning to try to wrap up all 12 bills by December 20th. Whatever they do not wrap up, they would most likely put into a continuing resolution for the remainder of the year. That's a strong possibility. I think bills that you would likely be interested in, such as transportation, energy, and water, those bills have more of a likelihood of getting enacted for fiscal year '20. Some of the other bills, such as Labor, Health, and Human Services, Homeland Security, they may run the risk of being part of a continuing resolution, and that's primarily over some policy riders that are in those bills, things including the President's request for board of all funding. So we should know more when they get back from this week's recess. They're all out this week for Thanksgiving. So in the next, I'd say, week or two, we should have a better idea of what hopefully will get done here by the end of the year. So having said that, do you have any questions over that before I get started?
I don't think so.
No?
No.
Okay. Having said that, I'll get started with the draft of your federal agenda. This is the work of both myself and your staff, and I do appreciate your staff providing you with updates and some new information for some of these projects. And there's a couple of new ones on here. So let's start with North Junction. There were some updates that your staff provided me, and I do appreciate that. As far as opportunities for North Junction for 2020, we will be looking at an INFRA grant, which you all applied for last year. The problem with your grant, according to DOT, is that your cost-benefit ratio doesn't quite pass muster for them. I joked with your City Manager Bob Leighton about the fact that I think you need more cars there in order to get a better, more competitive grant, but I know nobody wants more traffic. Outside of INFRA, there will be a Surface Transportation Reauthorization Bill possibly next year. It's due to be reauthorized, and there is a possibility that Congress will put projects in there, although I would say it's a small possibility. The Chairman of the House Transportation Committee, Pete DeFazio, has suggested at times that he would like to do projects in this bill, but I just don't know if that's going to happen. There still hasn't been quite a will for certain members of Congress to do, to go back to earmarking, and if there were projects in this bill, they would essentially be considered Outside of that, the likelihood of what I'll call an infrastructure package, which would be separate than a Surface Transportation Bill, is probably dead. There just isn't a will to increase revenue for an additional infrastructure package. So what I think the infrastructure package will turn into is a Surface Transportation Bill, possibly a housing bill that's out there right now, a Water Resources Development Act that are all packaged together, and that Congress will call an infrastructure package. So it will likely be pieces of what I would call normal reauthorizing bills that will all be put together. And all of those bills are up for reauthorization next year, the Water Resources Development Act and a Surface Transportation Bill. So moving along, we're now on to the Amtrak Extension. We made some headway recently in the end of September. Amtrak, BSNF, and KDOT have agreed to do a study to determine the infrastructure cost. That study is needed to move forward with the extension of the Amtrak service. We were told the study would take 60 days, so that if they started October 1, and I need to verify if they started and when they started, if they started October 1, they should be done here next week. So I will contact Amtrak to get an update on that, and once that study is done, they'll know the path forward with your, with KDOT and the Governor's Office. So we're sort of waiting on them, and hopefully the study comes out favorable to the city. I'm just going to move along unless... Do you have any questions on those first before I go forward?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Water Supply Equus Beds. You had two significant things happen this past year, this year, current year, I should say, 2019. Senator Moran and Roberts' bill was signed into law that extends the operation for Equus Beds for another 10 years. That allows the Bureau of Reclamation to budget, if they would like to, Equus Beds. And that means they would put funding for Equus Beds in the budget request to Congress. Your staff has met with the Austin office to talk about that. That is a bit of an uphill climb at this point because the Bureau's budget is very small. Your congressional delegation also sent a letter to Reclamation requesting funding in the budget. We won't know if that materializes until the present budget is released, and that, as you know, comes out usually the middle of February. It's due. It's often delayed in March, and that's a possibility. But we will keep working with your delegation to see if we can get it budgeted. Outside of that, the Senate Energy and Water Appropriations Bill included some language setting aside $20 million under the Water Reclamation and Reuse Program. And if you see the second bullet, I'm not going to read all that language, but the second bullet, second sentence, has the language in there. That language was drafted with the assistance of your staff. That language was requested specifically by Senator Moran, who sits on the appropriate, the, excuse me, on the Senate Appropriations Committee and was included in the bill. Now, that bill's not passed into law yet, but once it is, what it essentially does is sets aside $20 million for a project that's, that looks more like, like your aquifer, as opposed to the other projects that will apply for that funding under the Title 16 program. So I'm hopeful that having that carve-out will make your application next year a bit competitive. And I've already had conversations with Senator Moran's staff about talking with Reclamation about this language and about its intent in case Reclamation has some concerns with it. Or I shouldn't say concerns, but they misinterpret it. So we will keep working on that, but I would consider that to be a bit of a victory. And I will caution you though that this language only applies to this coming fiscal year. It's not in law year after year after year because the appropriations bills expire at the end of the year. So this language will only apply to the next round of grant competition under the Title 16 program. So if we want to try and do it, if we're not successful with a grant through this program this year, we're going to want to look to tweak this language and do it again in the next appropriations act.
Yes. Hold on.
Jim.
I'm going to...
Yeah. Jim, James Clendenin here. When we were there in March, you had indicated, and even at the Department of Reclamation, they had indicated that we are really trying to compete against the West Coast with all their water issues that they have out there. Is that going to be the case even with the change in this language? So if we don't get the grant this year, next year, will we still be competing against West Coast projects?
Yeah, so you're, and I'm having a little trouble hearing you, but I think what you're asking is the competition with the projects in the West, in California?
Yes.
Yes. So this language was drafted to try to mitigate that to some extent. Some of the language in here, such as multi-use aquifers, municipal and agricultural irrigation, recreational, all these little add-ons are not part of current criteria.
Okay.
And that was drafted specifically to kind of narrow the focus on aquifers such as yours. If this does not work this coming year, I'm going to want to look to try and tweak this or refine this language a bit more to make the universe of one for your project for the following year. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah. It absolutely does. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this language or this project?
Nope.
Okay. The public and affordable housing section, this is new. This was all through the input of your staff, and I appreciate that. The bill that's being highlighted here at the top is legislation that was introduced by the Senator, one of the Senators, and one of the Congresswomen from Washington. I should actually add some of that, so I'll probably add that in there. It's got strong bipartisan support. The Senate bill has 35 cosponsors. The House bill has 176 cosponsors, and it's basically to expand the low-income housing tax credit. And there's a little bit of details on that in the second bullet. So this is something that the city's folks that deal with housing issues asked us to pursue, and we will do that. This second section is mainly a grab bag of some public housing objectives that I'm happy to have in here and weigh in with your delegation on. There might be some other things that we flush out because of this, but I think the main objective is this legislation at the top. The next section deals with your ozone pilot program. I have been talking with your staff about drafting a, what would be an exemption under the Clean Air Act for a community like Wichita that is pursuing a, what's called an initiative to control transport plan with EPA. We've had calls with EPA. We had meetings, you all remember, last, I guess that was March, to talk about these exemptions. EPA seemed, from my recollection, understanding, but they couldn't present a path forward at their level. So what that means is we have to resort to trying to do something with Congress. So I have put together some language with assistance from your staff to create a pilot program. I'm not going to delve in too deep on the language because I'm still working on it, but the goal would be to get one of your members of Congress, or your member of Congress, or either one of your Senators, to pursue this in some viable piece of legislation. I don't think something like this would pass on its own. The Clean Air Act is somewhat sacred to members of Congress, so I'm not going to say this is an easy task, but it certainly makes sense to me, and I think since it makes sense a little bit to the EPA, we can have some fruitful conversations with folks on the Hill. So I'm working on that, and when I've got that language finalized, I'll share it with you all so you understand what it's all about.
All right.
Do you have any questions on that before I go to the last section here?
No.
Okay. So the last section, I'm not really going to spend too much time on. Your staff added some things in here that we did not have, but this is basically, as you recall from previous years, these are all the programs that typically benefit a city or a county, and you either get formula funds off these programs, or these programs establish a competitive grant program that you all apply for. So that's why they're on here. Some of these we more specifically pursue than others with your delegation. Many of these are of importance to other local clients that I, local governments that I represent. So I'm often engaged pursuing these issues with the Appropriations Committee on both the Senate and the House side. If something's missing in here, you can let me know. Most of these are programs that I've aggregated together, just to make sure you're covered. Having said that, I don't know if we have anything else to add to this. I think your staff has weighed in. I know we don't have to add a multimodal parking facility to this. I hope, I hope you're clapping for you because you guys put together a terrific grant application. I was pleasantly surprised that you got it. Not that it was, it was a good grant application, just I don't often see a win on the first time around with a brand-new project, so I was really happy to see that. So you should be happy for yourselves. And obviously, your delegation was pleased since they alerted you to it, so that's great. As far as a trip to Washington, I don't know if you all intend to come for National League of Cities again or a different time period, but we can talk about that after the holidays or at the beginning of the year. But I just don't know what your intentions are, but I certainly, it's always important for you to come to DC. A lot of these projects, the groundwork for these projects gets, you know, I start with it, and you reemphasize it when you're here, and that's critical to do. So I look forward to hosting you at some point in the winter. Any other questions for me right now about the agenda or things you want to see on it?
Go ahead.
Hey, Jim, this is Brandon Johnson. Just a quick question on opportunity zones. I talked with Congressman Estes last night just to see is there any appetite in Congress to maybe extend that maximum benefit another year or so, just because those regulations, the last round just came out two months ago, and people are like really now just grasping the power of opportunity zones. And if there's any way to maybe extend it and maybe find another way to incentivize neighborhoods, because that's, that's a struggle. Profit margins on affordable housing and things aren't the same as big projects in downtowns.
Right. So the next round of regulations is due out, I think, in December, if I remember correctly. There's another, another round that's supposed to finalize direct. You know, opportunity zones, there's been a lot of discussion about it of recent because you've got some on one side that are thinking we should get rid of them because there's been some discussions that they've already, there's been some abuse already. But I think from a local government standpoint, every local government I have is interested in not only keeping them but expanding them in some way. So if there's, if you could do me a favor and put some pen to paper on some of the specific things that Wichita would like to see as far as opportunity zones, we can add that to the agenda, to this, and start talking more broadly with your delegation and other members of Congress. I have another community in Colorado that has come into town a couple of times over the past year and has had their Senator talking with the White House and Treasury specifically about opportunity zones. So we could have, it would likely be more effective having your Senators weigh in with Treasury and the White House. So let's, let's get, let's get working on that now.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Jim? Jim, thank you. It was a very successful year this past year, and we appreciate all your efforts.
Mayor, thank you. Thanks to everyone.
Thanks, Jim.
All right. Ready for the state agenda?
Bye.
Bye.
Bye, Jim.
So I've been working over the last couple of months with Marley Carpenter and Kimberly Savadi. Neither of them were able to be with us today. Kimberly's going to join us by Skype.
Kimberly? Call again. We could try to call her, I suppose. I don't know why it's not connecting.
Let's try and just call her on the landline. Can you do that? Kimberly? Hello? We almost had her. So we can hear you. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Kimberly, I don't think your camera is on. Is it muted?
Well, it was on for a moment. It flashed. And now her phone's muted. Or we lost her again. Did we lose connection? So let's, so... So let's, let's just see if we can't get her on the phone. I mean, I don't want to waste everyone's morning trying to do this. Skype. That haircut probably put us to 6:00 PM tonight.
Number you have dialed is not in service. Please check the number and try your call again. This is Kimberly?
Kimberly, can you hear us?
Yes. Hi, yes, I can.
So the Skype's not working. We just have you on telephone, which I think will be fine. We just want to start going over our legislative agenda, and I'm going to turn it over to Dante.
Okay.
Kimberly, so we just finished going through our federal agenda, and we'd like you to review the state agenda. Also, as we discussed earlier this week, maybe talk about some recent accomplishments at the state and what we can expect in 2020.
Yes, absolutely. Well, good morning. And my sincere apologies. I could see everything. I could see everyone's foot moving and was trying to get everything fixed. And I am so, so sorry for if the problem was on my end. So we've had some good success in the legislature the last several years. I think one of my favorites is just the city of Wichita's flag is frankly so awesome. And, you know, whenever I'm down there and see it on display, it was just great. But then there's just such community pride that surrounds that flag. And working with the legislature on the license plate bill was a really exciting accomplishment. It probably took more energy and effort just because we finally got it passed on the last day. You know, people always want to go online to a bill that they see is very positive and has support. And so we were just trying to keep the bill as clean as possible. But we did enact that piece of legislation that allows for the specialized license plate for the city of Wichita flag. The revenues from that sale of that license plate, of course, going to the Parks and Rec Division. And of course, at any time, interject with any questions, of course. We also, last year, one of our top legislative priorities was to pass legislation related to metal theft to really help the police department with this persistent problem. Even though the price of metal has declined, we're just still continuing to see metal theft issues, whether it was at the, you know, art museum or at some of our park and recreation facilities. It's a real cost driver for the city, which is really unfortunate. And well as additional businesses. And so we've done, so we had a statute on the books for truly the last decade. But because the database itself that had been created in statute related to who are your regular perpetrators slash offenders of metal theft, that database had not been funded by the state just due to budget cuts and such. That we weren't, that the statute was basically useless. And so the big push this legislative session by the city of Wichita was to get that database funded. So Senator McGinn worked closely with us on that to help secure an appropriation, to get some initial funding up and running. So it was around $150,000. And so we will continue to monitor that implementation and then monitor the, you know, how it is all coming together. And hopefully, we won't have to make any adjustments to the metal theft database itself or to any of the enabling legislation, but we want to make sure that it is as effective a tool as possible. So if we need to make any adjustments, then we will do so. Another piece of legislation that we were real pleased to work on, this actually wasn't proactive. It was kind of something that came to us, but we were able to secure some positive benefits in it. As you all recall, in 2016, there was the wireless tower siting bill that unfortunately did quite a bit to hamper some local control over where and how small cells were going to be sited. And that is an issue, of course, that is still reverberating and bouncing around at the federal level at the FCC. And some orders have come down from the FCC to that end. And most of that is actually being litigated. So we have long been watching that particular piece of legislation. But as a follow-up to that conceptual bill, the wireless carriers came to Kansas again last legislative session and they had basically made an internal policy decision that for small cells, they were not interested in signing agreements with cities, franchise agreements for cities. Because they felt that small cells weren't necessarily public utilities. And so a legislative push was made on their behalf to essentially halt the practice of signing franchise agreements. And as you can imagine, you know, if you have one entity that is seeking to exempt themselves from franchise agreement language, that many other entities would quickly jump on that bandwagon. So one, we worked really hard to try and keep the conversation as narrow as possible and to where then other utilities, natural gas, electric, and cable wouldn't be inclined to try and hitch themselves to this particular piece of legislation. But then the other thing that we worked really hard in concert with the league and several other cities on was make sure that, okay, if they've made a policy decision that they're not going to do franchise agreements, well, you still need to do something. You still need to have some involvement with the city. And so we worked on the master wireless agreement. So it looks and feels like a franchise agreement. It actually just has a different terminology. It was late in the session that the cable industry did decide that they wanted to jump on the bandwagon in trying to exempt themselves as well from franchise agreements, and we were able to stave off that effort. But it is expected that we'll see some additional modifications in 2020. And, you know, we will, of course, continue to monitor this issue, work on this issue. And this probably dovetails with another particular piece of legislation that we do anticipate seeing this legislative session, which would be a cap on franchise agreements. So possibly taking it back to 5% or an even lower cap. So I think this whole notion of franchises is going to be a point of interest this legislative session, whether it's for cable, natural gas, electric, you know, or anyone that wants to use our ride away. So with that, I'll pause and see if there's any questions about some of the things that we have worked on, some of the kind of our top issues we've worked on. Of course, there was the issue that we worked on related to the liquor license for special events. And I think that that has hopefully proved beneficial for the city of Wichita as well, in particular, event venues or spaces like Riverfest and such. So I'll pause and see if there's any questions there before going to 2020.
Any questions? No, we're good.
Okay. So the 2020 legislative session, I think is going to be one, you know, we certainly have our legislative agenda. And I think that virtually anyone that anticipates working around the legislature in 2020 has to go in with their eyes wide open, knowing that it is an election year. And not only is the Kansas House of Representatives up, all 125 members, but all 40 members of the Kansas Senate are up for election. We have, you know, the four congressional seats are up, and of course, the US Senate seat is up. I think there is five members of the legislature still contemplating or have in fact jumped in to the race for the open US Senate seat. So that alone brings its own dynamic as far as how legislative issues go for the legislative session. There's just going to be a tremendous amount of jockeying for, you know, what it is that people can say on their mailers, on Facebook and Twitter as they're working to promote their reelection effort. So we just, you know, going in with eyes wide open that this legislative session will be a bit of a unique one. So we do have, I feel like, a pretty robust agenda and working with Dante, who's been excellent to work with, and the department heads who have really, you know, combed through and made sure that everything that was on there, on the agenda, you know, was a top-notch priority. So I think we've identified some key issues in economic development. And I think probably I'll just hit some of the highlights. Certainly on economic development, our star bonds are up for renewal in 2020. We know that there have been a lot of conversations about star bonds in the past. We were very fortunate in the last legislative session to get, or two sessions ago, to make sure that the baseball stadium was included and grandfathered in any modifications that were looking to be made to star bonds. So we did get that secured. But the whole program is up for potential renewal this year. And there have been a lot of reports coming particularly out of the Kansas Star about kind of the lack of transparency and reporting on the number of jobs and investments that have in fact been created as a result of various statements and of star bonds being one of them. So that will definitely be a big conversation. You know, we certainly anticipate seeing some additional funding potentially for workforce training. Governor Kelly has been on a workforce training tour the last several days. So, you know, we know that of the additional 500 and some million dollars we have in potential new revenue for 2020, which of course will go red in 2021, that I fully suspect there being some additional requests for workforce training. Rural opportunities zones, I believe Senator Elise Falcido continues to be very interested in getting rid of the rural notion and just creating opportunity zones. So we'll look to see what we can do to support that type of legislation. We've talked a little bit under public safety about metal theft. And then, you know, we're just going to continue to monitor that as well as body cameras. The juvenile issues, this is going to be a really interesting conversation to continue to have with the corrections committee. So we are definitely going to work with legislators to create hopefully some additional funding mechanisms to support this effort. Moving down into finance and tax. Of course, the property tax lid still, you know, is out there. And the league and some of the larger communities are, you know, continuing to search for additional ways to create some flexibility with that lid. We most certainly will see a robust conversation, especially related to taxes, particularly since the state does have some additional revenues this session. You know, we know that last legislative session, there were two efforts to pass a fairly comprehensive property, or a fairly comprehensive tax package that would have included the high-end kind of decoupling. You know, Kansas is one of the only four states that has not decoupled our tax code from the federal tax code. And so as a result, there's, you know, various, there's various implications for that. And so there was an effort last legislative session to in fact move forward with that and change some of the guilty tax and then also to deal with some of the internet sales tax. The governor vetoed those bills twice, and the vetoes were upheld. But we most certainly will see legislation related to tax policy this session. And I would anticipate that alternative property valuation might end up, while it may start as a standalone piece of legislation, if a big tax bill is moving, that alternative property valuation might end up in some sort of comprehensive tax reform bill as well as this internet sales tax collection. As some of you may have known, that after this last legislative session, an executive order was issued that essentially allowed for some modifications to internet sales tax collection. And there's been a legal challenge as to whether or not the governor has the authority via executive order to essentially impose a new tax on retailers or if that actually had to be done via statute. So that's kind of working its way through the system right now. But this will certainly, internet sales action, internet sales tax collection will definitely be an issue this coming session. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions on those couple of topics.
I think we're good.
Okay. General government operations. So this will be kind of an interesting session in this conversation. Last legislative session, we had two former mayors, kind of from the eastern side of the state, that introduced a piece of legislation related to municipal transfers. So essentially requiring certain publications and notifications if any transfers are made from one, from the utility, whether it's an electric or natural gas. In this case, they were mayors from cities that had a water utility. So this would have put a lot of parameters around any utility transfers that went from the utility fund to the general fund. That legislation didn't move forward last session, but I think there will be an increased interest in that this session. The publication requirement issue, I think the city of Lenexa may have just kind of written themselves out, and I need to find out exactly how they did this, the requirement to publish local ordinances in an official newspaper. So I anticipate with the city of Lenexa doing that, that there in fact will be some additional conversation around publication requirement. Let's see. Oh, certainly on the federal loan program, this will be something that we're going to watch. I think KDHNE is working on this particular issue. It could be very beneficial to the city of Wichita, allowing us to participate in, directly participate in federal loan programs. So we will continue to work on that and monitor that. And then a new issue for us this session relates to library resource sharing. And so this is supporting the state library resource sharing services and relating to the licensing of databases. So this is one that actually, as a, for my fun job sort of thing. I manage the library at my kid's school. So I love to see this particular issue on the agenda. And I will, we will definitely work closely with the State Library Association on exactly what it is the needs are here and what it is that we can do to assist. So I think that that's still, we're still trying to learn exactly what it is that will need to happen here. Moving on to public works and utilities. We, you know, continue, as we mentioned, as I mentioned previously, because of the broadband task force and because of, you know, this deployment of 5G, we know that small cell and wireless tower siting are going to continue to be big issues. And, you know, we know that small cells and wireless siting can be very helpful in deployment of broadband, but we also know that there still needs to be, you know, direct fiber. So I think that this coming legislative session, we're going to continue to see a robust conversation about how and where towers can be sited, particularly if we do have some sort of ruling from the FCC or some sort of court ruling related to the FCC requirements. And then, of course, the broadband task force will have its recommendations put forth. And there was kind of some back and forth as to which committee was going to be working on the broadband issues this coming legislative session. Was that going to be the Rural Revitalization Committee? Or was that going to be House Energy and Utilities? And I think that that question has not yet been answered. Although the legislator that chaired the Rural Revitalization Committee, Don Heinemann, who expressed the most interest in this broadband deployment discussion, he was in fact removed as the chairman of that committee like two weeks ago. So we're still waiting to see whether or not that will have an impact on where that bill goes. So I'm meeting with the head of the Energy and Utilities Committee chair this afternoon, in Hutchinson. So I'm hoping to have some additional information on where all of this broadband, franchise fee, small cell, where are all those issues going to go? Another issue that we've been successful in the past in saving off was there was a two-year effort to really put... two-year effort to really put an additional financial burden on the cities to pay additional funds, in fact doubling the funds that our customers pay into the state, the clean drinking water fee fund, in order to fund the state water plan. So we were able to save that off, not because we don't want the water plan to be funded, but because we were already paying a disproportionate share of the funding for the water plan. So that was an issue we've saved off. We don't feel that there will be that sort of push this coming session, but we do know that there is a look to create some additional fee funding from KDHNE to allow for a greater evaluation and more timely evaluation of different projects and project applications for the, for the city. So we are, we are looking at what those particular pieces of legislation will look Let's see. Another issue that we know that is going to be significant relates to the Wichita transmission line issue, and I know Councilmember Johnson and I, we had spoken about some possible efforts, whether it's, you know, via resolution and language that could go into a resolution or certainly Representative Finney, who we spoke with at length last legislative session, has got some robust ideas related to transmission siding. So I think we will continue to watch as some of those concepts evolve and see where it makes the most, you know, sense for us to, to really be supportive. The issues where we, you know, think that we can actually, we can have an impact and improve the siding process itself. I know one of the issues that I spoke with Councilmember Johnson on is that Wichita transmission line was an upgrade and currently in statute, upgrades don't have to go through the siding process. And not necessarily saying that an upgrade, any sort of transmission line upgrade needs to go through the siding process because that is a very long and cumbersome and expensive process, but perhaps at least some of the elements of the siding process could be incorporated into an upgrade project such as a public meeting or two public meetings along the route. And then, you know, maybe ensuring that landowners that receive notification, that they are actually communicating that with any individuals that are perhaps renting from them as well. So we are, we are looking at those particular issues. And then there's also the possibility of a piece of legislation related to municipal water conservation areas, which is a tool that is used right now for water conservation by the ag community. And we think that we have identified a possible way to adjust that to allow for municipal users to take advantage of the water conservation area statute as well. So that is another piece of legislation we're contemplating. Lastly, moving on to transportation, you can kind of see that, you know, we are anticipating this legislative session with some of the funding, with some of the additional revenues, a potential transportation plan. So that's, we're hearing a little chatter about that. And I know it is an election year, so people sure would love to go home and say that they've created, they've created and funded elements of a new transportation plan. So we are definitely going to watch that very closely. And with that, I am more than happy to answer any additional questions.
Yeah, Councilmember Johnson has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to wait to the end, I could have jumped in at that first pause, but I had a few things. So in regard to opportunity zones, and we kind of talked about this on the federal level, but if we could get a little more specific and maybe talk about ways to align state incentives that we currently have into opportunity zones specifically from the, from the federal program in those neighborhoods, because neighborhoods are tougher right now to get that investment in. And maybe also encourage the legislature to come up with some creative ways if there's a new way to incentivize these areas. I know that star bonds are not the most popular amongst some in the legislature, but if there was a way to come up with some form of a, you know, some neighborhood opportunity similar to that, I would love to have that conversation or see that dialogue happen in regard to opportunity zones. And then, and a lot of my comments, I know this is kind of general overview in our agenda, but just a few more specifics, like on the economic development, one of the big issues that we see in opportunity zones and with small businesses is lack of access to capital. And if there's a way to come up with that, last year, we, we supported the Kansas Reinvestment Act, and I don't know if Senator Falcido is going to reintroduce that, but if there's a way to get capital to these folks who are struggling, I meet with business owners all the time that just need $15,000 or $20,000 and there's some things holding them up. So if there's ways to support that type of development for small business, I think that would be pretty helpful. On the public safety piece, we have this body cam legislation that continues to get gutted on the state level. If there's a way to encourage maybe some more specifics when we look at when that information should be released, maybe encourage like 30 days or less, that's most of what the community is saying, they want to see this footage when it is that important quickly and not wait two years until after a case is over with to find out something that happened. But maybe encourage some of those more specific things on there. And then...
And I think that the judicial council will have their recommendations, and so, you know, hopefully we'll see some of that. I know that that body cam issue was kind of left a little open just because we don't know exactly what the judicial council will be recommending or has recommended yet. So hopefully we'll be able to narrow that down.
Cool. And then, and then lastly, as you brought it up on the transmission siding, whether we want to get specific or not on Representative Finney's bill, I think that would be good, again, just to highlight some of the issues that we had. So the, the public meetings and everything happened with Evergy, people saw it, they just didn't see the picture, so they saw a route, they knew that an upgrade was coming. Those individual meetings with property owners were kind of an issue because there was no real conversation amongst those property owners. And we, honestly, outside of Representative Finney's bill, if there is a way to involve the council member that represents whatever district that is across the state, so that at least someone who's held accountable to the public as far as elected official is involved, because I can say both me and my predecessor, if we would have seen those pictures, we would have said this is not okay to put in a neighborhood. So if there's ways to get specific around not just new transmission lines, but upgrades, and I know that it's expensive for upgrades of any size around the state, but if there's a way for that accountability or oversight, that would be at least my preference so that we could have some say in that. And again, by law, even with those meetings, if people don't want them, they still have the power to do so. And I think we need some form of it's not okay to do this here in this area. Just my thoughts.
Anything else?
We got the, from the Bike and Ped Advisory Committee, their recommendations for legislative agenda, and it seemed to all be kind of lumped into this bicycle safety, but they had a couple other things that I think we might want to highlight. One was to support the legislation to reduce distracted driving, and that didn't seem to have gotten in here. And then I think this, they are, they talk about electric-assisted motorized bicycles, but I just want to make sure that it's, clarify the legal ability to operate those and then this consistency part, so.
We grouped both of their recommendations into this one.
Into this one?
On, it was meant to incorporate both of them.
Okay.
Just didn't want to have multiple items.
Okay. How about the distracted driving?
I don't know that we've added that, did we?
So I have the list that was submitted by Bike Ped, we'll go back and revisit it and make sure it gets included and incorporated.
Okay. Thank you.
What, what are they recommending on distracted driving that's not already law?
The letter, they sent it November 15th, and it says, "Support pending legislation to reduce distracted driving caused by the use of cell phones by motorists to improve traffic safety for all roadway users, including bicyclists and pedestrians."
So they're adding that to pedestrians and bicyclists because it's already illegal to use your phone?
Right, but they, in here it says there's some pending legislation.
Okay.
So maybe we could just get some more research on that, a little bit more clarity.
Yeah, I suppose it might be nice to know what exactly that is before we lobby for it.
Yeah, that's what I, what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Kimberly. Mayor, City Council, over the next several weeks, staff will continue working with Kimberly and Jim and Marley to finalize agendas, and we'll bring it forward to council for formal adoption. So I took notes on the questions that were asked, the concerns that were raised, and we'll follow up on those and get you some more information. Thank you. Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
You too.
Mayor, we're going to jump onto the next item if that's all right.
Yep.
There has been a significant amount of work that has been done during the year on the construction of the Northwest Water Facility. What we're going to do is bring to you a summary of the work that's been done in Phase One, some discussions about Phase Two, as well as discussion about the rate increases. All of this has been reviewed with the Steering Committee, and they've made a recommendation to you as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alan King to introduce our topic.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Alan King, Director of Public Works and Utilities. As Mr. Layton said, this is on the proposed Northwest Wichita Water Facility, the project, and we'd like to provide some recommendations on steps and approvals that will move this along the path forward on this very important project. So starting off with a little background, some history, it starts off really in a broader context of, of the council consistently making investments in improving our infrastructure and including streets and other infrastructure, and among that is the, the water and sewer utilities. We have for some time now been providing the necessary rates and budget to invest in the water and sewer utility, and most notably, we've been, over the last several years, we've been investing in the horizontal facilities, the pipelines. And we've been seeing some good results, we've been having reduced breakage rates and service interruptions. We've now turned our attention to a, another very important area in that infrastructure group, and that is the, the treatment plant, specifically the water treatment plant. So this began with putting together a letter of interest and submitting that to EPA for what's called WIFIA funding, which is a type of funding through the federal government that allows us to lock in at a low interest rate and to defer payments sometime after the project is underway and into the future. And the companion to that is the, the state's revolving loan fund, which is also a very important part of financing. The reason I mention this is in order for this project to become really more feasible, it was necessary for us to secure the necessary funding and to do that in such a way that did not have a, an adverse impact on our rate payers. And so we did some important work to get ready for this, this funding opportunity, and we submitted our letter of interest back in July of 2018. Now, the other thing that we've been doing is we started our preliminary design estimate. That was really work that was necessary to submit the letter of interest. We needed to be able to define the project and to come up with some preliminary cost estimates to submit in that letter of interest. That work was done through Burns and McDonnell, and we looked at such things that were to put the new treatment plant, looking at what sorts of treatment processes that we wanted to consider. And we did that through a three to five percent design level, which we call a preliminary design, and that's what we did to set ourselves up for Phase One of the, of the project. Cost estimate, at this early, very early stage, we were looking at a $524.2 million cost, and that was, like I say, just an estimate at this, at this point in the project. We went ahead then and proceeded with Phase One of the project, which was to select a design-build team and an owner's representative. And after some effort, we come up with the Wichita Water Partners, which is included in, includes some local companies, both in consulting and contracting side, and then also Garver Engineering to act as our owner's representative. And there'll be more information about the Wichita Water Partners here a little bit later on in the presentation. The, the next step was for us, is, is part of this Phase One, is to actually do the, the design to a higher level, the 30% design, and to come up with more detail on the pipelines, the treatment processes, looking at the level of redundancy and resiliency for the project, and then also to conduct some market outreach for contractors and subcontractors and for suppliers. All necessary work in this Phase One to set up the actual project. Also included in Phase One was the proceeding with the necessary environmental reviews and permits, which brings us to the Phase One results. And what I can report is that these results are very favorable, that there was a, an extensive amount of value engineering and optimization efforts that took place. That includes risk and price optimization. You can't have one without the other, risk, the, 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 the more you can reduce risk, the more you can reduce the, the project costs. And then also cost reductions in the, in the project, and those were very successful. In order for us to take this very complex and expensive project and to come up with ways to reduce costs and to hold off cost increases, that's what was basically the end of the Phase One results, leading to a, a $494.2 million project cost. So at the very beginning, it was $508 million, and we brought it down to $494 million in spite of all the cost increases that are inherent in taking time for a project, the necessary inflation, changes in regulations and requirements, and then also going from a very high level, less detailed estimation to a very detailed, specific estimation. And in doing that, we were not only able to offset these costs, but actually reduce the project costs. So a guaranteed maximum price was delivered on, on October 28th of 19, and this, this cost estimate include, is for a project that is a very high-quality project. It meets all the requirements of redundancy that the city established, and we have a very aggressive level of redundancy that we're requiring. Basically, the project is fully redundant. If something should go down in the treatment plant, it has the redundancy that allows us to take portions of it offline and make the repairs, and in the meantime, use other portions of the, of the facility and continue service uninterrupted. That's a very aggressive goal, and we've met it with the design that we're talking about here. It also meets very much, the water quality was, was an important consideration to make sure that our water quality was consistent and a narrow range of acceptable outcomes and that we had the necessary water flexibility on our, our water source. One of the very important things for us in this water treatment plan is to meet our drought resiliency targets, which means that in a 1% drought, one that happens about every hundred years, like the 1930s drought, that even in that kind of a drought, we will have the necessary resiliency to be able to get through that drought and with a minimum impact on our customers. So by using our water resources in a way that we can't presently use them with our existing treatment plant, we'll be able to make great strides towards our water resiliency, and this, this treatment plant does that. And then also to make sure that we have enough water to provide the service to our customers into the future, well into the future. And so it'll be, it'll have a 120 million gallon per day firm capacity. So with that, I just wanted to report to you all that the project is doing very well, and I wanted to give our partners in the Wichita Water Partners an opportunity to give you some more of the background and details of how this project's been going. And so with this, I'll turn it over to Ron Coker, Executive with Burns and Mack. Ron?
I have a question for Director King before we go on, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So Alan, on the, the bottom line, the price proposal of 510.1 versus the Phase Two design, 494.2, which is the comparable to the cost estimate of 524.2?
It would be the, it would be the 510.1. The 524 included more than just the design, it included other related costs. So the, the, the 494 would be compared to the 508, which was the initial cost. When you lump in these other costs, then you're comparing the 524 to the 510.
Thank you.
So it's a lower cost.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Good morning. My name is Ron Coker with Burns and McDonnell. Thank you to, to Mayor and the, and the members of the City Council for allowing us to give you a quick overview. I know that you sat through many of the Steering Committee sessions, so we're just going to quickly walk through some of what we talked about in those sessions. If you have any questions, feel free to slow me down as we go. As Alan mentioned, I am with Burns and McDonnell, Senior Vice President, I run the water practice for Burns and Mack, I'm also the Project Executive for Wichita Water Partners. We will, we'll talk a little bit about our team. I'd like to introduce just a few people in the audience, Dave Kitchin. Dave, if you would stand, Dave is actually your Project Manager and Project Director for this project. Dave is one of the leaders in our design-build team, he's also a, a former two-time President of the Water Design-Build Council, which is one of the, one of the two national entities that really look at water design-build projects. Dave, for the last few Steering Dave, for the last few Steering Committee meetings, I've been presenting because Dave's been driving the price developments and the project review. So in the future, you'll hear more from Dave, and I know you'll be happy to hear less from me. Eric Bergen is our Design Lead as well with HDR. Eric's going to come up here in just a minute. And then Mike Hafling is our Lead Construction Manager with Albarisi as well. Mike is in the audience, too. So real quickly, we've talked about this before. This is our Wichita Water Partners team. Wichita Water Partners is a joint venture between Burns &amp; McDonnell and Albarisi. It's a 50/50 JV. This is our 35th time to partner together in that kind of format. All projects that we've worked on before have been successful. So we think we've got a great structure here, but lots of other things going on in this organizational chart. So HDR is our Lead Designer. HDR is a top-10 design firm in the US. Albarisi is one of the largest contractors in the United States as well. And then Burns &amp; McDonnell plays the role of really both designer and builder. And Burns &amp; Mac is a top-10 design firm and a top-10 design-build firm in the nation. Paired with that group is a lot of large and talented local design firms and construction firms. I won't go through the whole list, but really, the way this team was built was to have both national expertise in the delivery of water treatment plants of this size and strong local participation and capability. And I know many members of our team are in the audience today, so we're proud to have them. We did add one member since the original submittal, which is CML Collective, and Christina's helping with our communications and outreach efforts. I will say that this group will grow significantly over time. There will be several hundred members of this team as we go forward. So don't expect just to see this group as we move forward through the project. I will also say one other thing. One of the things that we asked Albarisi, Burns &amp; Mac, and asked Albarisi when we decided to partner and go after this project, was that Burns &amp; Mac's had a presence here in Wichita for 20 years, and we said if we do this and we're successful, we'd like Albarisi to have a presence here as well. And I can report on behalf of Mike and Albarisi that just shortly after the first year, Albarisi will be open to have a Wichita presence as well. So we'll have another local member of this team as we move forward. Oh, one thing before I leave that, just so everybody is aware, I know I've said this to you all many times, but there are no members of this team that have any connection to the Flint, Michigan water prices. I know that's been a rumor out in the community that has been talked about quite significantly. Sorry that that rumor exists, but I can assure you that nobody here has any connection to that project. Okay, real quickly, on experience. So this team has a long local experience with your water system. These are just some of the projects over the past 30 years that members of this team have involved in. Burns &amp; McDonnell actually reaches back all the way to 1910. Robert McDonnell reviewed Wichita's water system in 1910, and Burns &amp; Mac designed the first, well, I shouldn't say the first, an early dam on the Little Ark River in 1911. So a lot of history with the city of Wichita. We believe that's important because, you know, one of the most critical things when you're developing a project like this is understanding your system and your water quality, both raw water and then your finished water quality requirements, because we don't want to disrupt that or change that significantly. Lots of large treatment plant experience, large pipeline experience as well, so not just local experience, but really the best blend that we thought we could put together of national expertise and local experience and capability. One of the projects that we were most interested in was the Platte River project, in large part because this is not, while it's not a design-build project, it is designed by HDR. It was permitted by Burns &amp; McDonnell and was constructed by Albarisi. This is Omaha's newest plant, it's 100-MGD plant, it's very similar to your project. I wish I could have brought you the construction photos, because when you take the shell off of that big building, you see a plant site that looks very similar to your plant site. Obviously, because of weather concerns, it's enclosed in Omaha. But just to give you some sense of scale on the size of that project, here's an excavator, these are cars in front of it, this is a big building, this is a big facility. Eric was the Lead Designer on that facility. And I think, too, that one of the important characteristics that this team brings, and particularly with Eric's background and HDR's experience and Burns &amp; Mac's experiences, it's great to have water treatment plant design experience all over, but it's really important to have it in the areas of the country where your project is, because the source waters are similar, the treatment processes are similar. So because this plant is so similar to what you will be installing, we think it's a great example of the opportunity that Wichita has. Eric, I'm going to let Eric come up now. We're not going to walk you through the model like we did last time, so no life in the drop of a water molecule as we go forward. We have just a few slides, and we'll let Eric talk about the design just briefly.
This is the advance. Good morning. My name is Eric Bergen with HDR. I am pleased to be here to speak with you, the Mayor and Council, to talk just a little bit about the design, not as much as those that spoke last time, or I spoke last time. This is a overall site orientation. You might see some differences from where we were here last time, is that this includes the optimization process, so you might notice the tall towers for Backwater gone, et cetera. And so we'll be moving through this facility, and I'd like to give you just a little bit of orientation to this. Zoo Boulevard's the road you see on the bottom. North is generally to your up, and left, and south is generally to the bottom and right. And so the water enters at the top, at the north end, and generally works its way through the treatment facility down towards the south. And we're just going to hit the highlights of that right now. So the very first treatment step is your solids-contact clarifiers. There are six solids-contact clarifiers. This is where we're going to add chemical to remove contaminants and hardness from the water. This is a similar process to what you use today. The six clarifiers give you flexibility. If you notice, you've got pipe coming in and out of each one. If there is one that requires service or maintenance, you can take it offline, and you can continue to use the other clarifiers without stopping or hesitation. These clarifiers also will basically provide your full chemical treatment, really reducing that hardness, reducing contaminants, and reducing other things in your water supply. So this is really the heart and center of your treatment plant, which offers you great flexibility and great water quality to match what you, customers and businesses, expect today. The next step is filtration. So whereas the previous step was more chemical treatment, removing hardness, removing contaminants, filtration is more of a mechanical process, straining and sifting, removing the last bit of fine particles that are remaining in the water out before we disinfect and send on to your customers. This facility is completely enclosed, and you'll notice in the bottom, you can see stairways and access platforms. This allows your staff the ability to maintain equipment and keep everything accessible and serviceable. This facility is also broken into quadrants, so similarly, when we talked about solids-contact clarification, you have redundancy in this facility by being able to isolate small portions of the filter gallery and then being able to keep the rest of it running while the plant is going. After the water is filtered, we're going to disinfect it. So this is a chlorine contact chamber. You see lots of walls there. This provides kind of a circuitous route. Disinfection involves many different things, but one of them is time, contact time with the water. And so this circuitous route allows the water to flow through there in the adequate amount of time to provide inactivation of pathogens, so that we're providing, you know, clean water to the rest of your facility, or rest of your customers. And finally, we'll pump the water out. So this is a cutaway from your high-service pump station. We have some high-service pumping here at the Northwest Treatment Site, and we'll also transfer some water to your existing facilities at Hess. This provides some flexibility and also reduces costs, because we're not double-pumping all of the water. And it also balances the use of your existing facilities. So we use Hess where it makes sense, and we use these new facilities where they also make sense.
Any questions?
Yeah. I kind of blasted through that, a little less than I did last time.
Any questions for Eric in the design before we move on? Okay, thanks, Eric. I might also mention, and I know this was mentioned in the Steering Committee meeting, this is really one of the opportunities for savings that was identified on the project. I think it's probably the easiest to visualize and understand. So the new water treatment plant site is up and to the left, where the two gray lines converge. That allowed the existing water pipelines, the raw water pipelines, to the old plant site, which is down on the bottom right, where the orange and blue lines converge, to be used in the development of the plant site. So you'll see the dark blue line. We're going to convert that line to a finished water pipeline, so that'll take finished water from the new plant to the Hess pump station for distribution out in your system. And then one of the goals, or maybe two goals, that the city wanted in addition to that was, they needed to be able to move water from the old plant site back up, from existing well-field water credits that, or excuse me, water rights that they had. They needed to be able to move that water up to the new plant site for treatment. And then they also wanted some level of redundancy, so that they weren't just committed to a single pipeline taking finished water from the new plant to the old plant site. So originally, we looked at a new pipeline in yellow to help accomplish that. So in that scenario, the local well-field water would be moved up through the orange line to the new plant site, and, excuse me, would be moved up the gray and across the yellow to the new plant site. And the orange pipeline would be used as a redundant pipeline for finished water, if you ever needed that. One of the recommendations that was really the final element, one of the final elements that the city reviewed, that we talked about as part of the Steering Committee, was, rather than building four miles of that new pipeline in yellow, let's instead look at that orange pipeline and see if we can't dual-purpose that pipeline. You've already invested in it, it's in good shape. Let's use it both to move water 99.9% of the time from the local well-field up to the plant for treatment, but then let's build connections such that if you were ever in a catastrophic condition with your finished water treatment line or pipeline, that we could convert that to a finished water pipeline and route finished water back down to your system. So that was the final review. The city did accept that change. We did modify it slightly to make it easier to make that transition on both ends of that pipeline, so we feel like it was a net benefit to the city in addition to a cost savings. But that's really, in large part, a great example of some of the evaluations that occurred. I did not include the full up-down chart that we talked about in the Steering Committees, where we walked through every phase of the project and we looked at additions and subtractions, but there were certainly many, and there always are on a project like this that is large and complex. So this is just a quick look at the process that we went through. So Alan mentioned you do a very high-level concept design at the LOI. In early-stage engineering and design, you're testing that against your cost model that you've built. At some point, about 30%, you get enough design done where you can actually go to the market and price the project, so you get a conversion to actual dollars in there. And then you continue to iterate until you get that project down to the budget amount that you're comfortable with and it meets the needs that you have. And that's where we are at $494.2 million. The city has reviewed that number. I'll let Alan and Don talk a little bit about that afterwards. We did have another requirement, which was to look at operational cost of this new facility and to develop a design that saved at least 10% on the projected operational cost for this new facility. We went through that process. We actually think, through the design, that we're going to be able to save much more than that in future operational costs, so about $6 million a year in those costs, which if you look over the terms of the loan, if you just look at the SRF loans, that's well over $100 million. So just like in the Steering Committee, I'll reiterate, this isn't savings from your existing operational cost. This is future savings from what it will take to operate the new plant. And remember, you're treating to a higher water quality standard in the new plant, and you have additional process to allow you to have a maximum flexibility from all your water sources as well. Here's the timeline. So we submitted WIFIA LOI in 2018, and the city was invited to do a full application later that year. Our GMP proposal went in on the 28th of October. The city submitted its WIFIA application on the 30th of October. Now we're in a 12-month review cycle with EPA, and hopefully that'll be shorter, but I think that's really where we've laid this project out. So two things I think are important, and you look at this. One is, we're not, we're going to look at, can we start the project, the early site work activity before the WIFIA closure, which allows you then to move this project up and help save money for the city. And then on the back end of that, you'll see the commissioning and training, not waiting until we're substantially complete before we start commissioning of the project, and instead, commissioning the systems that are complete, so that we get the back end or the operational element of this project as early as possible as well. In the second presentation we did at the Steering Committee, we talked about forward-looking things, not just the design and construction. So large infrastructure projects like this create great opportunities for you to change the dynamic of how you do capital projects, so it creates opportunities to communicate better. We've got a new website, you've got, I think you've got a fact sheet there that gives you the address, the website address, and new social media channels. So we'll have great platforms to do a lot of public outreach and really help the community become more informed of this project as we go through the next 12 months of planning and moving towards construction. It's a great opportunity to utilize technology to really implement technology into the basic plant site that supports the city's desire to improve its asset management and its long-term operational costs. And then it's also a great opportunity to integrate new companies, new suppliers into your network, and then to think about the next-generation workforce. You have a next-generation plant here, why not think about a next-generation workforce to run that plant? And we'll talk about those two items specifically just real quickly. Projected peak workforce, 350 people, that occurs mid-2022. So here's a great example. When you look at that curve or that ramp up in staffing, it shows you that in 2020, we've got a lot of time to plan and get ready for that peak, and to get companies ready for that peak, so that as the workflow really starts to accelerate across the project site, we're maximizing the number of companies, the number of local companies and workforce that can participate in the project. We talked about expanding your supplier base. There's really three keys to that in particular. One is right-sizing work packages. Depending on how we define a work package, often defines who can even participate in trying to price a work package or deliver a work package. So we'll have, we'll really work at right sizing the program to maximize the number of local companies that can participate in the project. Remember, we have an 85% goal. That's our goal in trying to deliver this project locally. So we are focused on trying to, first and foremost, define work packages that support the local market. Eliminating bonding requirements, this is really a key, particularly for emerging businesses or disadvantaged businesses. So we'll use a subcontractor default insurance program, so that we don't have bonding requirements or companies don't have to try and meet bonding requirements to even be considered for the work. That program completely protects the project as well, so it's just an insurance program rather than a bonding program. And then looking at where we need to accelerate payment, often in cash flow, is a challenge for emerging and disadvantaged businesses as well. So as we're encouraging them to step up and grow their business, we don't want to become an impediment to that process, because they don't have enough cash flow to be able to be successful while they go through that process. I will note that over 200 contractors were contracted just in Phase 1 alone. So as this project moves forward, those entities will be recontacted and will be broadening that network as well. Real quickly on educational outreach. So we had talked at the Steering Committee meeting as well about the opportunity for educational outreach and the opportunity to build local emerging and minority and disadvantaged businesses as part of this program. So we'll do two things as part of that. One is, you met Dr. Fred McKinney if you came to the Steering Committee meeting. Dr. Fred is a Chair at Quinnipiac University, and he heads a Minority Education and Outreach Program. So we've worked with Christina and team to develop a, what that program looks like. That program will actually kick off on January 24th with Dr. Fred to really educate people about the opportunity and companies about the opportunity. On March 25th and 26th, we'll have an entrepreneurship educational series. That'll be the kickoff, so it'll be Dr. Fred and other educators. And the goal will really be about helping those businesses build their business. This is not about construction necessarily or design. This is about building a strong emerging and disadvantaged business climate within Wichita and letting those businesses then feed off of each other. There'll be four workshops between April and June that are more specific and targeted to individual elements, and then we'll wrap up in October. That's Year 1. We'll have some form of repeating that process each year of this project. We'll change it each year as the project moves. So in Year 1, it's general, because we're just planning. In Year 2, it'll start being more construction or design-focused, potentially, and we'll modify that as we go forward. We'll also offer a Tuck Scholarship for each of the five years. So actually, Christina's going to be our first Tuck recipient, scholarship recipient, so she'll go to the Tuck School at Dartmouth to participate in the, to participate in the Business Minority Education. Business Minority Education, Executive Education Program. Those are other minority business CEOs that go through that process. And we really wanted it to be Christina first so that she could use that knowledge to help tell the story to other businesses and get them plugged in. The final thing I'll talk about is the workforce training program. So this really gets into both construction workforce and operations workforce. We've had a series of discussions with WSU Tech about both developing a program similar to your Wichita Promise Program, which creates opportunities for those that may not have been exposed to construction to learn about the construction trades. WSU Tech has a new apprenticeship program that rolls out in January as well, where local contractors can hire folks to run through a two-year apprenticeship program. So we're really looking at how do we build both a program that feeds that apprenticeship program and then a way to incentivize companies to participate in that apprenticeship program. I can tell you from Burns &amp; McDonald and Alberi C. Corporations, we've committed $300,000 as a minimum to scholarships to feed that program or those programs. We'll also commit to helping develop the programs as we go forward. So we're going to put our money where our mouth is, and this is our money. This is not part of your project costs, but we believe that that's necessary to really make the program go, rather than just talk about it. We want to develop something that actually has some legs and can move forward. And then we've also talked to those groups about operations training. There's a national, really a national shortage of operators and folks that deal with operations of facilities like this. And it's not just water and wastewater utilities, it's all utilities. So I know some of you have had conversations with Evergy on power utilities or with your natural gas provider on gas utilities. There's a great opportunity here. And because of Wichita's proximity, there's a great opportunity, I think, to partner with the city and really develop a program that starts to train a next generation of operators, both for your facility, but then for the state of Kansas and really for the region as well. Tracy Streeter, the former head of the Kansas Water Office, works at Burns &amp; Mack now. Tracy's going to head that program. I know he's going to, he's already reached out to KDHE and LKM and Kansas Municipal Utilities, who are all interested in participating in that program as well. So I think we'll have a great opportunity there. And likewise, we continue to refine this as well. We're meeting with the public school system later today and some other folks that do training. So we'll continue to refine this and give you more details as we go forward. So that's all I have. Any questions for me?
Hey, I don't have a question. I just wanted to publicly say thank you for all of this additional work. And when we look at trying to help out women and minority-owned businesses and growing them and expanding our vendor base, this is what being intentional looks like, and I appreciate that. And I think this is going to be great, not only for the water treatment plant, but just for folks doing business in the city of Wichita. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, absolutely.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for the record. My name is Don Henry, Assistant Director of Public Works and Utilities for the city. Alan mentioned the outcomes of the Phase 1 project earlier, so I'll just kind of touch on some of the highlights and take time to compliment the team that we've put together. It's been an outstanding effort, and we've really gelled as a team. Worked through a number of iterative design workshops and different workshops to go through a process for the value engineering to bring this project in under budget, on scope and on time. We've identified $14.1 million in savings with the $494.2 million guaranteed maximum price is currently locked in. And we feel that we've also been able to achieve that and not sacrifice anything on scope. As Alan touched on, we've got a fully redundant plant that meets all of our objectives for water quality, for capacity, for resiliency and flexibility within the system. I'd like to touch on the resiliency that this is going to provide. Alan mentioned that we would be able to treat either 100% groundwater or 100% surface water with this plant. That's something that we don't currently have with the existing plant, and that provides us a lot of resiliency in being able to furnish water to our customers. If we choose to take one of the raw water sources offline or if something happens and we lose a transmission line between the Aquas beds or Cheney, we'll still be able to furnish water to our customers without sacrificing anything in terms of capacity or water quality. This also leverages a lot of resiliency on our drought goals. We've got a goal in place to achieve 1% drought resiliency. That is to get through a dust bowl type drought with minimal impact on our customers where we can continue with commerce and industry, enjoy the quality of life that we have. This plant will allow us to reach those objectives sooner, more efficiently, and more economically. The project is also on time. We've submitted the WIFIA application, as we touched on earlier. We plan to kick the early works package off in January. That will provide $6 million in savings for the project, and then we're on time to start up commissioning the plant in 2024. And just like it was important to take the time to do the value engineering to hold costs down for the benefit of our customers on the price of the plant, city staff also took the time to make sure that we had the optimized financing package put together, that we took advantage of and maximized the benefits of both the WIFIA program and the State Revolving Loan Fund program. And that's to the benefit of our rate payers and our customers. And so what we did is we looked beyond just the core elements of the project, the plant, the pipeline, and the substation, and took the time to identify all of the other items that were eligible to fold into the financing package. And so the slide before you, the blue box illustrates the core project, the Phase 1 design fee, the Phase 2 design and construction fees, and the construction of the Evergy substation. Those elements total the $510 million price that Alan shared with you earlier. Other eligible items include underground power distribution. For this project, underground power is very desirable compared to overhead power lines. It provides a measure of protection from the Kansas weather that we have from ice storms and wind, also provides a desired level of aesthetics for the plant as well. The owner's representative services are a key element of this project in Phase 1. Garber Engineering was a very good partner and did a lot of work to help us keep those costs down under budget. We've got $21 million for owner's representation built into the current WIFIA application. However, we do have a signed contract with Garber Engineering now, and that cost has been reduced to $16.3 million. The additional sites that we'll need, we will need a site to construct the Evergy substation on. We've also identified additional sites to optimize the footprint of the plant and also raw water transmission piping to optimize that and provide cost savings. We expect that number of $10 million that's included in the WIFIA application to come down quite a bit there, too. The HESS pump station is the city's single high-service pump station that furnishes treated water into the distribution system. There are some improvements that will need to be made there. Those are items that are eligible for WIFIA funding as well. This will not only allow us to efficiently tie in the new plant to the pump station, but also built-in, it provides a measure of resiliency and reliability going forward. Also included in the WIFIA application are other items that are eligible. These aren't actually project costs, but they're expenses that are a result of the project, and that includes capitalized interest and then other miscellaneous fees. And so it's important to realize that with the costs that we're showing here, we're continuing to work on those and expect those to come down even more. Some of these are estimates, and as we move through the different components of the project, we expect those to come down. And so if it pleases Mayor and Council at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Ben Nelson to talk more detail about the financing packages and the rates to cover all of the city's water and sewer needs in the next CIP planning period.
Good morning, Ben Nelson, Wichita Public Works. As Don said, I'd like to kind of talk about the finances over the next five to 10 minutes for the project and how that translates to our annual rate projections and the 2020 rate recommendation we'll be bringing forward in a week. Don't want to belabor the point, but did want to highlight really there are two primary sources of financing that we're using on this. A couple of years ago, when we first applied or submitted our interest to EPA for the WIFIA loan, Water Infrastructure Finance Innovation Act is what the WIFIA acronym is. It's a loan through EPA that allows for low-cost interest rates as well as a deferred repayment plan where we don't have to start making any payments until five years after construction is completed. So in this case, it may be 2028 at the earliest in terms of when we have to start paying on the WIFIA-financed portion of the project. So the combined impact of having low cost of interest plus the deferred repayment is something that we don't have available, especially the deferred repayment with our revenue bonds. That made WIFIA desirable. An equal share of that optimum financing mix is the State Revolving Fund, as Alan and Don explained earlier. It also has a very low cost of interest. Actually, its interest rate is the lowest of anything that we have available to us. It also has a deferred repayment option, not quite as long as WIFIA, but still certainly desirable to help us with our rate increases. So we're trying to maximize the WIFIA and the SRF availability as much as we can. WIFIA has approved us for up to $270 million of the core project and any eligible costs, up to a cap of 49% of all of those eligible costs. SRF has preliminarily approved us for $267 million or up to 50% of the total eligible and project costs. So we are maximizing our take of both of those. There may be a small slice that we have to fill in in utility, cash, or revenue bonds, but primarily we're taking advantage of low cost of interest and deferred repayment through state and federal loan programs. WIFIA application again has been submitted. Next steps with SRF again, preliminarily been approved for it. They're counting on it in their project priority list. We need to have a public hearing at our next council meeting, and then once that required public hearing is done, we can go ahead and submit the SRF application and begin the financial close for that, too. So we're proceeding on that front. Transition over to rates. Every year since 2010, we have shown you rate increase, annual rate increase projections for the next year, the subsequent year, as well as 10 to 20 years following that. And we're doing that again today. This is our combined water and wastewater utility increase from 2020 through 2039. This is inclusive of everything in our utility. So we're talking obviously today specifically about our Northwest Wichita Water Facility. We also have a $355 million biological nutrient removal, sometimes we call it BNR project, coming up on the wastewater side in eight or nine years. It's for phosphorus and nitrogen limits at three of our wastewater plants. We have a baseline CIP is usually what we call of about $450 million for normal rehabilitation and replacement of just miscellaneous infrastructure assets. So things like lift stations on the wastewater side, water and sewer main replacements, any improvements that we need to make to Cheney Dam, those kinds of things are all accounted for as well. Finally, a sizable chunk of our revenue requirements going forward certainly is our operations and maintenance, just the day-to-day fact that we have more than 300 employees, we have energy needs, we have chemical needs, we have equipment, we have all sorts of operating and maintenance needs to keep everything going. So this is the fully burdened rate model that we update every year, and the results of the most current projection is shown in the yellow bars on this chart. We're at about 5% for the next several years and then drop down to around the 4% range before leveling off to 3% for inflationary increases. So I'll highlight four takeaways from this slide. The first, it goes back to a carryover from last year's rate discussions. We were asked to look at what the rates would be, this is outside of the new water plant, but what the rates would be if we switched to 30-year debt instead of our normal 20-year debt for our baseline CIP projects. Right now, we do 20-year debt because we think it, we thought it gave us the best balance of minimizing total financing costs, but also having a minimized impact on rates. So we did go run that scenario to switch everything to 30-year debt to see what the outcome would be. If we did that, we could get a gradual reduction of about a third of a percent on our annual water and wastewater increases for the next 10 years. However, it pushes a lot of costs out beyond this planning period for two reasons. Number one, our financial advisor, Baker Tilly, advised us that we would be paying 25 to 50 basis points higher, quarter or half a percent higher interest rate if we switched to 30-year debt, and we're accumulating more interest because the principal doesn't get paid off nearly as quickly. And so it adds more than $400 million in cost long-term to the utility.
Ben, what's in those baseline CIP projects?
These are everything other than the Northwest Wichita Water Facility and the BNR. So when we have our water and sewer mains and those kinds of things.
So that's kind of brand-new to me when you say you were requested to look at 30-year debt on baseline. The only debt that I heard us say that we should look at going to 30-year was for the new water treatment plant, not for baseline projects. So maybe somebody misinterpreted some action, unless...
I probably misinterpreted then. For a water plant and BNR, we're looking at WIFIA going 30 years with that in order to ease the rate burden. So I apologize if I misinterpreted that last year.
We do have an analysis, I think, that shows just the plants that was done earlier. And I, my recollection is it was probably about half of that amount, about a $200 million increase over that 30-year period of time.
Maybe come back and look at that. What does 1% rate increase get us?
1% rate increase today would get us about $1.5 million across the two utilities.
So when I look at these projections presented, they're very similar to projections you presented a year ago. Now that's before that we potentially have realized $123 million savings over the next 20 years. So that's at least $5 million a year.
So the rate, the slide earlier showing the $6.2 million a year of cost savings is cost avoidance, not cost savings. That is, and I think Ron characterized this correctly, that was when we finished the preliminary design stage, that was the treatment plant that was contemplated at that time, which was the conceptual plant, not the real plant, compared to the plant that they're, that they've got to the 30% design stage today.
So I get the whole cost avoidance, but let me back up a minute. So we did projections on what we thought our costs would be over the next 30 years. So whether it's cost avoidance, cost savings, our projections didn't include the $123 million in savings.
The safest, the easiest way to explain this is the 3% design stage, that water plant, if we had built it, would cost about $14 million. We currently spend $7 million today on our current plant. So saving $6 million off of the $14 million contemplated plant, the conceptual design, gets the actual projected cost to probably around the $8 million range, which is a million more than what we spend today.
I get that, but didn't we take in that, all of that information when we did projections a year ago on what it would cost us to run a new water treatment plant?
We did not have estimates from the team on O&amp;M.
So how do we do projections?
With our O&amp;M expenses as we know them every year. And one of the important things, I know no one's going to want to hear this, we always ask for rate increases for a single year, and then we update the projections and come back. And we don't always have the very best information at all times. We have the best information that we have at that point in time. So when we were at the conceptual design phase, we did not have the O&amp;M estimate refined to where we're at today. So we would have had to have built in an additional $7 million of operations and maintenance costs if we had used that information back then. I think that's the value of that optimization and value engineering approach, is it's gotten that amount to something that's much more livable compared to what we actually spend
Still doesn't get reflected in our 30-year projections of rate increases because the projections aren't much different than they were a year ago.
That's correct.
All right.
That's the other takeaway. The gray line on here shows the rate increase projections we showed last year. We're right on target for the most part with those going forward. The third takeaway I'd like to highlight is the benefit of using WIFIA and State Revolving Loan Fund. Because we talked about the optimum financing mix, right? What the deferred repayment schedules do is it allows us to avoid double-digit rate increases that we would have to have if we financed this with revenue bonds. The reason why revenue bonds require much higher rate increases is we don't have temporary financing to float the construction of the project. We don't have construction loans, we're not able to use temporary notes like are allowed on GO projects. And so we would have to front-load through an advance refund and get the money in the door by going to the bond markets early, which requires us to raise rates earlier. So WIFIA and SRF, the biggest benefit that we're seeing with that is it's helping us avoid double-digit rate increases. The final takeaway for us with this whole thing is the national average of 5.8%. That's what the 50 largest cities have been raising their water wastewater rates since 2001. We are going to remain consistently below that for the next 20 years, we expect, to the point where we continually have rates that are some of the lowest 10 water wastewater rates for residential, commercial, and industrial. We would expect that trend to continue with the rate plan that we have going forward. Terms of customer impacts, again, we always just ask for an approval of and recommend approval of rates for the subsequent year. So 19 years of what you just saw, those are projections. We will update those as we get more information in, you know, the coming year and then update you about this time next year. But what we will be recommending is the 5.0% rate increase for 2020, and this shows what that impact would be across five different types of customer profiles. So an average residential customer would see an increase of about $3 a month. If you're a low-use customer, maybe more, in terms of all, water volumes, maybe more If you're a low-use customer, maybe more, in terms of water volumes, maybe more like $2 a month, and it scales up from there for commercial and industrial customers. Final thing I'd want to leave you with, we struggled a little bit with trying to convey the impact of WFI and the state revolving fund to something that people can understand and quantify for them in terms of what they see on their bill. So we can talk about avoiding double-digit increases and low cost of debt and deferred repayments, but what we're going to try to do here is show you what the actual impact would be on a customer's bill. And so what this shows is a cumulative change in the average monthly residential customer's water and wastewater bill, cumulative change from where we're at today to where we would expect to be when the new plant comes online. The black bars are what we would be able to accomplish with our current rate plan and our optimized financing mix. The red, red bars there show what it would be cumulatively from now to 2024 if we did not have WFI and SRF. So we, customer, average customer would be paying about $19 more per month in 2024 than they do today for the new water plant because of WFI and SRF. If we didn't have that, they'd be paying $40 more per month. So what basically the benefit of WFI and SRF is when the new plant comes online, by that point in time, customers would be paying $21 less per month because of WFI and SRF. Gradually, that difference would start to shake out with smaller increases on the revenue bond side. But in terms of when the plant would come online, it's a pretty big spread, we think, which is what makes WFI and SRF advantageous. Any other financing or rate questions? I'll turn it back over to Don. Thank you, everybody.
And so moving forward into Phase Two, we really wanted to take the time and drill down and make sure that we understood the benefits of what we have with the current team and what we're going to realize moving forward into Phase Two. And the current team of Wichita Water Partners and Garber Engineering is the owner's rep. Makes a lot of sense moving forward. Ben shared with you the benefits of the optimized rate package. Just like the benefits of that, this is the team that we need moving forward to make that happen. Moving forward with Wichita Water Partners locks in a competitive price that's lower than the original budget. It locks the city into a lower-risk position and minimizes contingency. We've got the contract negotiated and set up in such a way that there's no need for change orders. And that goes a long ways to avoiding cost escalation and make sure that we stay on target as we move through construction with the project. Sticking with this team and this schedule that we have laid out provides us the certainty that we need to be able to achieve the WFI and SRF financing as we go through Phase Two. And Wichita Water Partners is a highly qualified team. We really have access to some of the finest talent in the industry with this team. That goes for both Wichita Water Partners and Garber Engineering. And our staff is really excited about being able to make recommendations to move forward with this team. We took time with Garber, just like we have a really customized water treatment plant to meet all of the needs of this community. We took the team, the time to make sure that our owner's representative services were set up in such a way that they are customized and tailored to meet the needs of this project. If you think back to the workflow chart that Ron showed with you earlier, you can see the, you know, the ramping up and down of the number of construction workers and technicians that are on-site at any time requires us to tailor the needs of construction management. And those construction engineers and those inspections have to be tailored to that workflow, both in terms of expertise and also the hours of resources that are allocated to those individual workdays. And so going into Phase Two, Garber's work will be focused on completing the design and those, review of those design submittals, the construction management, the right types of engineers, those construction inspections, and then the administrative support that's required for that moving forward. An important part of the process, an important team member has been Oversight, the Oversight and Steering Committee. As we've worked through the iterative design workshops and the processes for the value engineering, we've shared information with the Oversight Committee, and they've provided a lot of valuable input in terms of those elements, aesthetics, optimized layout of the footprint. A lot of valuable information has been received by the Oversight Committee. And I'd like to share with you that the committee was made up, a diverse member of stakeholders. It was a good representation of our entire customer base. Councilmember Brandon Johnson and Councilmember Ryan Fry are on the committee. Kathy Sexton, the city manager of Derby, Kansas, one of our largest wholesale customers, was on the committee. Andrew Nave with the Greater Wichita Partnership was on the Steering Committee. Larry Pisinca with Spirit Aero Systems. Clint Cornejo with All Metal Recycling. And Don Sherman with Evergy were also on the Steering Committee. So we appreciate all the valuable input that was provided. And happy to report to council that in the last Steering Committee meeting, we shared a lot of the information we're sharing with you today, but also staff's recommendations to move forward with the current team. And the committee unanimously agreed with staff's recommendations to move forward with Wichita Water Partners and Garber Engineering. And with that, I'd like to turn the presentation back over to Alan King to get into the details of staff's recommendations and the project moving forward.
So this brings us to the conclusion of today's workshop. We have some specific recommendations. Those recommendations are, staff's recommendations are also echoed by our owner's representative, Garber. And then, like Don said, we brought these before the Steering Committee, and they also unanimously supported the same recommendations. Specifically, that the, that we go ahead and proceed with Phase Two as an amendment to the Wichita Water Partners contract to build the new facility. This would be a, this would be an amendment to the existing Phase One contract that we presently have with them. And it would be one amendment, but it would actually have two notices to proceed. One would be to proceed immediately with the project with what's called an early works project. This is a very creative way for Wichita Water Partners to pass on $6.3 million in savings, which is reflected in their guaranteed maximum price, by getting out ahead of the WFI approval process and doing the necessary site work that's going to be needed to be done to build this project anyway. That, that does not mean that there, that's the notice to proceed for the entire project. Once we get the word back from WFI, which we believe will be a go-ahead with the financing, we'll be able to successfully negotiate a loan condition with them. The council will have one more chance to weigh in on whether to proceed with the next part of the project, which is really the biggest part of the project. So it'll be one amendment, but it'll have two notices to proceed. So the council will get a chance to weigh in before we go with the rest of the project once, with the knowledge of what the status is of the WFI application. We also recommend that we proceed with Garber as the owner's representative for the reasons that Don outlined. We ask for a combined utility rate increase for 2020 in the amount of 5% and that we ask for the approval of the SRF application, which means that in the December 3 meeting next Tuesday, we'll be bringing to council for their consideration and approval the contract for Phase Two with Wichita Water Partners, the contract for Garber Engineering, both of which have been signed, the SRF application so that we can have the necessary public hearing to proceed with that, and then approval of the 2020 rates. That'll be on the December 3 meeting. Then on the December 17 meeting, we'll actually have the, we'd actually submit the state revolving fund application so that we can proceed with that important part of our financing plan with the idea that from January on to October of 2020, we'll actually perform the early works package. So we could be actually breaking ground in January of 2020 on this project. Finally, in October of 2020, we should have the word back on the status of the WFI loan. And with that, then council will have an opportunity to consider a notice to proceed with the bulk of the project with substantial completion estimated to be in September of 2024. So we'll be bringing a number of items to council on their December 3 meeting for your review and approval. And this is, this maps out a plan moving forward on actually starting and building this very important project. And with that, I can stand for questions, staff can too. And we also have members from Wichita Water Partners and Garber here to answer any questions you might have.
So you have projections built in there for the BNR in the future. Does the BNR in those early projections of rate increases include any alternative funding like WFI or SRF?
Yes, sir. That's a, that's a very important point that you're making. The assumptions, this is all based on assumptions, right? The assumptions on what you're seeing here, it assumes that the sewer BNR project would be funded with WFI.
How about SRF?
Same thing, both WFI and SRF. That's, this, this projection assumes that funding would be available to do the BNR project.
So Mr. Fry and Mr. Johnson, you two served. Anything to add?
Well, I mean, going into it, we had a lot of things to discuss, a lot of things to consider. And Councilmember Johnson also mentioned the DBE and EB component. Very impressed with some of the things that the team put together as relates to the optimization planning. That was a concern I had early on. And putting in a process to identify workers going forward with that, I think, is important. Some changes to the design itself, I think, with the pipeline realignment and repurposing that, helping with that cost savings is a very enlightening process. I never imagined I would learn this much about water and water plants. I'm not qualified to run one. I can turn on a tap, that's about it. But again, I'm very confident with the team that we put together. Very grateful for the way the staff has worked with Wichita Water Partners and Garber to get us to this point. Nobody likes increases, but this is a very safe and easy way to do this and give us some long-term security and comfort knowing that we're going to have a water treatment plant to last several decades, hopefully. So again, kudos to everyone that worked on this, and thank you.
I would just say ditto. Great job.
All right. Anything else? You need anything else?
Not on this, no, Mayor. Mayor, I was wondering, I mean, you've got, you had two heavy issues. I could bring back the RAD as a workshop item at the end of your meeting next Tuesday instead of going through at least another half-hour presentation. It's up to you how you'd like us to handle that.
What do you guys want to do?
I'd prefer that.
Next Tuesday?
Yep.
All right, let's do that.
Okay, let's, we'll do that.
That completes today's workshop. All right, thank you all.